Here, I'll move down, babe.
Hmm?
This chair's gonna break.
You better get another one then.
Cause we don't want to be picking you up off the floor.
Off the floor? We got a third member, you said?
Yeah. I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, so. Well, this is the shopping.
You know where it is?
I tried to get an idea and I was only, I was obviously going to go up there, but he explained it to me. I said, I think I know where that's at.
It's up by the Saint Spirit.
Marvin, who's the third member?
Yes.
Marvin is across the street where Alpine used to be.
Oh, Gary. Oh, okay.
And the Lillen people.
Yeah, I went over there for Quest.
Yeah, Quest used to be there.
Yeah.
That's the shopping.
That plaza right there.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we had our, um, senior tea there at the end.
Yeah, at Alpine, we had a, um, we had a reunion mixer one day a year after.
Isn't that where the overflow parks do ball games?
Not that I know of.
In that plaza, it's a whole lot. On the other side, there's a, you can see the church. You can see it kinda.
The church or the elementary center?
The church, across.
Oh, you're not saying Spirit is?
Right, but that shopping plaza, that lot is an overflow. That's where, that's where Mineson Parks Center games.
There'll probably still be a little park there.
You ready?
We're not taking that shopping center.
Okay, everyone, we're gonna get started. It's now six oh five. Time and place for the zoning hearing board to meet. My name's Tom Grafiotis, solicitor for the zoning board. We have two of our three members here tonight. We have two of the three members here tonight. Is that loud enough for you? Okay. We have two of the three members here tonight, so we do have a quorum. Just, um, little matters of housekeeping. I'm gonna mark as exhibit one, the application by Prismo, Primzo LLC for the use variance. Again, the property at, in question is 1295 Grand Boulevard, Mineson, PA, currently located in the B2 zoning district. They're seeking to, a use variance to install indoor and outdoor storage facilities at this property. Exhibit two is gonna be the notice that was in the paper in consecutive weeks, June first and June seventh, advising the public of tonight's hearing. I don't have the proof of publication, but Michelle Conti from the Mon Valley Independent did advise that it was gonna be published and it confirmed it. With that, I'd ask that we swear in our zoning officer.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to present shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Shall we help you, God?
Your name, please?
Marvin Davis.
Your position with the city?
Uh, co-zoning officer.
Did you post this property with notice of the, tonight's hearing?
I did.
Did you provide the property owners that are nearby with notice of tonight's hearing as well?
Yes.
With that, uh, if thus the zoning board has any questions for Mr. Marvin, I'm gonna turn over the hearing to the applicants of counsel, Mr. Matta.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Solicitor. I'm Tim Matta for the record. I represent Primzo LLC, the applicant for the use variance at 1295 Grand Boulevard. I would like to have marked as an exhibit, the current zoning map, I think for the record.
Okay.
You want me to hand it to Deb?
Sure. That'd be exhibit three.
It'd be, yes. You have stickers, will you want me to just mark?
I'll, I'll do it after. That's okay.
The next exhibit we would have is our agreement of sale with the, um, Mineson Volunteer Fire and Relief Association. As seller, it confer standing on us to bring this application before the zoning hearing board.
Might be four.
The next exhibit will be the rendering as provided by the applicant to display exactly what the ultimate use would be should the zoning hearing board grant the relief as requested. By way of introduction, um, Mr. Solicitor and zoning hearing board members, we are attempting to purchase the property located at 1295. It is currently zoned as B2. We have done, um, some marketing analyses informally and have determined that a B2 use for this particular property uh, does not reflect the changing conditions economically as they exist in the city of Mineson. Unfortunately for the current owner, the property has come into great disrepair. Not only the building itself, but also the parking lot that accompanies this particular building. If you're oriented on Grand Boulevard, facing the front doors of the plaza, to your south, you have the institutional, um, occupants, the Betham Temple, uh, used to be called the Jewish synagogue. You have St. Paul's, uh, adjacent to them. Uh, if you're going to the east, you have the Mineson Elementary Center. If you're going to the north, you have Rome Funeral Home. And if you're going to the west, you have, um, four or five, um, single-family residences. We are in a position to assure those residents and also the zoning hearing board that there will be no new environmental problems that exist uh, if the permitted use, uh, as a departure from the B2 is granted. If there is any type of light trespass, uh, from lights, because there will be some lights put on the building to ensure safety and security for, um, not only the property, but for the people utilizing the property, we will put light shields up there. Traffic patterns will not be any different than they are now. Actually, they'll be a lot less than they were earlier on before the plaza became less occupied than it is now. We feel that, uh, you know, there won't be any more noise or any other, uh, existing problems for the neighbors. Patsy does, is the owner of Primzo, uh, plan on being a good neighbor. He lives in Mineson. Uh, he's a Mineson resident for a long time. Uh, if you note, he's also the developer of Libby's now, so if you're driving by Libby's, you'll see uh, the, um, extent of his developments and his aspirations for this particular plaza. Quite frankly, if we tried to utilize it in any fashion consistent with current B2 uses, uh, we would wind up probably in the same position that the firemen are in now. You just can't make the kind of money necessary to keep a property that, uh, in, in economic standing. It just won't happen anymore. We need this type of, uh, use variance. We believe that, um, it will be a shot in the arm for the city of Mineson and it won't be a problem for any of the, um, adjacent neighbors either. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Patsy is here. He could be put under oath to answer any questions you might have. More than happy to address anything that, uh, comes up from, um, the audience as well.
Is the property, is there any tenants in there now? Any occupants?
There are several. Patsy, there are four or five right now, or why don't you come on up and get sworn in? Deb, you wanna swear? Patsy?
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to present shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. The solicitor asked if there are any current tenants in the building? Four tenants, um, Resnick's Medical Supply, Elaine's Hair Care. I don't exactly know what. Build a rhythm dance studio? Yeah, that one. And there's, uh, Ike's Whiten has a medical office back there. Whoa Har just left, the chiropractor, but the rest of the building is vacant. The building is in such disrepair, they had to move some of their tenants from one side to the other because of the roof leakage. And, um, even though we won't be varying from the current footprint of the building for the climate controlled storage initially, the indoor storage, um, we are gonna have to put a whole new roof on there. It's just, it's a complete mess. Some of the, uh, members of the current ownership are here too, and we could call them to the standard if you're concerned about not only the condition of the building itself, but also the parking area. They are in support of the, um, use variance as well.
Well, it might be helpful to hear from them. Are any of these people going to stay or is it gonna be completely storaged out?
They, they all, verbally, they all told me they wanna stay. They're, none of them are under lease except for the dance studio. But right now, the other three are a month a month.
Okay, so the plan is to be some, some storage outside, some inside, and these businesses remaining inside?
Correct, correct. But the outdoor storage is literally a couple of years down the road.
Okay, let's face it, for lack of a better word.
I just have one question. Mr. Matta, that loose space, is that the outside storage?
Yes, that's, I can answer that for you. That is, the, I wanted to show you the amount of the parking lot we intend to use, alright? And, and, um, you can see it covers a great deal of the parking lot. Now, we, we don't know exactly what kind of storage that's gonna be, boat, car, outdoor, or both. But, um, my, my develop, my, um, my contractor did that. I'm not real sure why it's blue and yellow, but that's just, it shows you the space.
Okay, is it like open air? That part's gonna be open air storage where they drive in the boat?
Possibly. We might use RV storage. We don't know yet.
Okay.
It could be a mix of both.
Alright.
Depends on, on a demand.
Okay, and I got one other question. Um, is anybody here that lives on Reeves and Grand Boulevard? Is any of the residents here? Do you have?
Oh wait, they'll, they'll have their chance.
Oh, okay.
Let's let them get through their case in chief, so to speak.
Any other questions from the board or from the solicitor asked?
I, I, I have one more question for Mr. Altamore. Can you approach, sir?
Yes.
I'm gonna hand you exhibit A or exhibit one, which is the purported use variance application. Can you take a look at that real quick?
Yes.
Can you tell me if your signature is on that document?
My signature?
Yes.
Alright, well?
Sure, certainly.
Yes.
And is that document true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I can anticipate maybe a question or two from the audience. Josh Dirkovich and I spoke earlier on. He was concerned about whether or not this was actually gonna, uh, be a zoning change in that area, and I assured him it's not. It's just a use variance. And, uh, just because we're asking for use variance doesn't mean that the next occupant comes in and can change the use at that point in time. They'd have to come back here and maybe even ask for a zoning change. But that's not something we're asking for.
Well, and as you know, the zoning hearing board can't count a zoning change. That's entirely within the purview of city council.
City government, that's correct.
Okay. We're gonna, we have five exhibits right now. We're gonna mark as exhibit six, the current zoning ordinance, and we're gonna admit our exhibits. Now, did you wanna field questions from the audience?
We'll be more than happy to, however you wanna have us, uh.
Wait a second. Okay, what we're gonna do is if you have questions for the applicant, we're gonna swear you in now and you can ask the questions. If you just have a general comment, we'll wait to the end and we'll swear you in. So everybody starts as we're doing. Anyone has a question, we're gonna swear them in now. Anyone with just a general comment, yes in favor or no against, we'll swear them at the end. Okay, sir, let us sworn in, please?
Here?
Yes, sir.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to present shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Can I have your name, sir, for the record?
Ernest Telegraphus.
And what's your address?
49 Rex Boulevard.
Okay. Please ask, address the applicant with your questions.
Okay, um, can you be more specific? Because you're trying to acquire a large chunk of land and you have no specific details how it's gonna be used. Uh, you say it could be this way, it could be a boat, it could be vehicles. I mean, you're, you're asking for a big chunk and Mineson is hurting because there's no industries, there's no enterprises that will hire a hundred, two hundred, three hundred people. That's what's gonna take to make Mineson get up from the ground. And i- i- if you're trying to get this big chunk of land and, and you're not giving us any specific details, how many people will be employed? I'm assuming that there's gonna be maybe one or two people employed just to manage the storage. Uh, uh, then you're gonna have some, uh, tenants and you're not telling us how much time you're gonna give the tenants? Are they gonna be there indefinitely or is it gonna be a short term? I mean, you're asking for a big chunk that could make a big impact if Mineson's gonna bring in, uh, some substantial economic benefit. And number two, when you take this property, do you just have the intention to go to the county, to the school board and the city council attorneys and get the taxes reduced? If so, I don't know how that's gonna be a shot in the arm that you were talking about, Mr. Matta.
Well, if I could field the second part of this question first.
Certainly.
Right now, there have been no taxes paid for several years, as I understand it. Steve, am I right? Last couple of years. Um, so we don't, we don't have a plan to seek a reassessment currently. And as far as, uh, the chunk of, uh, land that we're occupying, I mean, obviously now as a B2, it's not gonna be able to make it, so I would think the, uh, chances are much better for, uh, our use variance to make it than, um, the B2 did.
Anything you'd go, we got a better chance. Better chance to further what?
Any here, something's happening here.
What could happen? Some guy could come in the corner and put a point there with two hundred employees.
No, they're not. Where's he been for the last couple of years?
I'm just saying, that could happen.
Well, I mean, obviously, his, his question addresses more of an economic impact for the city rather than the issue we're here to decide about the, uh.
That's what Mineson is about. Mineson is hurting and the, the real estate is shrinking. And then you've got people who come in and they buy chunks of land and then they get the taxes reduced. And then, uh, you've got other people who've got nonprofits, they come in.
They just do all the sunny money.
All I know is this, who's gonna pay for the added expenses as time goes on? The little people. So everybody else is gonna end up holding a bigger tax burden. And look at the school board. They're, they're, they're gonna do it this, uh, this month. They're gonna pass a taxing freeze. It just keeps going on and on and then we get the special interests to come in, okay? But they're not really giving us a shot in the arm. That's all I'm talking about.
He's a Mineson resident who's doing a Mineson development. He has a track record for improving developments that he's already undertaken.
I'm not denouncing the thought.
I think we've answered his question fully.
I'm not denouncing the thought. I, I'm just saying, we have a better use for that big chunk of land. Especially when Mineson needs industry or some sort of enterprise that has many people employed. That's what I'm saying.
Duly noted. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
Josh, did you wanna put your questions on record?
Uh, I'm good.
Okay, now, does anyone wanna be sworn in to give a general statement in favor of or against the property? Sir, please approach.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to present shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, sir.
Yeah, John Bubba Palmer, 1228 Maple Avenue, Mineson. Uh, I'm here as one of the representatives of the fire department. Just to give a, a, a quick, obviously this concerns economics, this and that. If we do not sell this building, the fire department will be out of business before January 1st. It's, it's that simple.
Excuse me, sir. It's his turn to speak.
He's making a statement, a blanket statement.
This, you had your opportunity.
Well, he wasn't here at the time.
Well, he's not, he's not the applicant. He's just giving a general statement. Please proceed.
These gentlemen approached us about the purchase. We were, we were kind of in the works with somebody else. We had a Mineson guy come aboard. He's interested. It seemed like it was gonna go a lot quicker for our organization. And, and again, and I, and I promise to you guys, we will be out of business before the end of this year. You wanna talk about economics? You know what your house, homeowners insurance will be with no fire suppression in the city of Mineson? Take a guess, cause I couldn't even guess. I'll probably have to move out of town.
You mean the council ain't gonna solicit some other, uh, company?
I'm sure they will, absolutely. But, but, let me, I'm talking here, sir.
Mister Solicitor, this man has the microphone.
Sure.
To allow this constant interjection.
I'm, I'm, I understood, I understood. We'll give you another chance at the end if you wanna sum up, sir.
Here's the deal. The city of Mineson residents needs this to happen. We need it. We don't want it to happen. We're doing this at a sale. It, it's, uh, appraised for more than we're asking, a good bit more. We're doing it at a sale to get us to zero, the, the way the fire department has zero debt. This gentleman asked about tax reduction. We have approached city council and school board, denied by all three. If they wouldn't do it for one of their own entities, why would they do it for, you know, Patsy and his organization? So I'm, I'm talking, please.
This is getting absurd.
So I don't think that's, that's an issue at all, at all. And let's face it, uh, Mr. Matta asked Steve about our back taxes. We are two years behind because we can only scrounge up enough money every couple of years to pay these taxes. You know, if we could afford it, we wouldn't be selling the building. I mean, we're, we're big time behind the eight ball in our organization, who serves this city 100% volunteer. I literally left my family at the dinner table to come here to speak tonight. Volunteer for this community, not to be heckled by people in the audience. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, can I ask you one question to the record?
Sure, certainly.
Yes.
Could you describe, obviously, more, in more detail, the condition of the building as it sits today?
So, so the building is obvious, if you've ever driven by or especially through the parking lot, it's obviously in disrepair. Uh, like he mentioned, we had to move the Elaine's Beauty Salon from one side to the other. Uh, that roof is three separate roofs, the side that she was on, we were having a lot of issues. And again, because the only money, only income the fire department has is what we generate. So you can only put in what you have, or you gotta take out another loan, which we can't do because we already owe. You know, we're trying to get back to even. Uh, that parking lot is obviously probably the worst and may probably the biggest expense up there. We've been ourselves on Saturday afternoons with brooms, sweeping up potholes and, and filling them by hand as, as well as we could. We, we just can't afford for that to happen. If this variance doesn't get altered, if we end up not selling this property, it will be the city's responsibility because we're gonna go bankrupt, close the doors, and then you guys can figure it out. You as the city, not you personally.
We're not the city anyway.
No, yes, I understand, but it, it's gonna be, we'll lose it on taxes. Nobody's gonna buy it. You know, not with the lien on the building. Who's gonna buy that? Nobody. I mean, this is 100% gonna save the fire department.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, that's all.
Anyone else would like to speak?
And if I may just follow up one thing.
Certainly.
That, that he mentioned, if you look at the B2 element here, they're not bad business people. You can't make it in that particular area as a B2. That's why we're asking for a use variance.
Understood. Sir, please approach and be sworn in.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to present shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Cover your name, sir.
Delmore Apple, Municipal Fire Chief, 1821 Service Lane, Mineson. Uh, I'll tell you a little history of, of the guys that are back here. I'm the municipal fire chief, so I oversee both fire departments. I'm not actually a member of the number one fire department, but I am the municipal fire chief. Uh, knowing these guys sitting here tonight, I'm not gonna say they're proud that they even have to be here tonight, okay? They tried for a long time to make the use of that property work and it has become a burden that has actually drove them in a hole. And, uh, and I think that, you know, their pride is probably, uh, you know, hurt a little bit by having to do this. But having said that, Mr. Palmer is exactly right. I stand here quite often and I ask the regular seat holders here for money for the fire department. Not because I think they have it to give to me, but it's that important to me as the fire chief and important that we can provide people like Mr. Telegraphus here with fire protection and fire service. And, uh, so having said that, uh, one thing is I, I don't really know Patsy personally, but I will tell you that he's actually a godsend right now for a couple of properties. And I think his, with his line, he's actually going to do a lot better for the city. I don't think he's done yet, okay? Seems like an heck of a businessman. If you see the job that he's doing with Libby's up there, it's, it's gonna be a beautiful building. And I think he'll do the same thing with this property. And, uh, I think actually it's a gift for the city of Mineson because like Bubba said earlier, if it doesn't go through, now you have another vacant building that's probably with the roof condition that it is, you're gonna have a real problem. And no one's gonna come in here and dump 500,000 into that building besides maybe this guy here, okay? To get it up and running, backs on, back on the tax rolls. So for the residents of the city of Mineson, for the fire department in general, this deal needs to go through. I think we have some good businessmen here. It's good for the city of Mineson. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to present shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Your name, sir?
My name is Pino, P-I-N-O.
First name or last name?
C N Flood. Are you gonna say what? But you said I said Pino, it's easy.
Go ahead.
I have a question, Pino, for you guys. No, forget it. He's, he's doing what he's best to him. It's pretty hard. I'm okay with that. If the city of Mineson, if remained, then council would have given you the tax exemption for the city, will you still be your business? Just a question.
I'll, I'll answer that. I'll say that. Why? I mean, we're out of that. We don't have 100,000 just to fix the parking lot, or better. Another six, three, seven, you fix one third of the group. And, and a school district is more taxed than, than, than 5,000 in the city.
But you asked the city, right? I remember that.
Yes.
And they turned you down, right?
They approved us, yeah, the city approved it one year, turns it down the next.
And the school turned you down.
School board told us they absolutely cannot do that. At the very next meeting, they, they came, they laid all taxes out of the black house and said, somebody out of New York City.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanna speak? Yes, please approach.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to present shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Your name, please?
Don Catarino, 1210 Reeves Avenue.
Please proceed.
I just wanna say I'm in favor of that.
Thank you. I think somebody else wanted to come up and speak. Please approach, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to present shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Your name, sir?
Uh, my name is Steve Gatis. I live at 517 Manow. I'm also the president of the fire department and, uh, also a general contractor in town. So I've been the one doing, trying to keep after the repairs on that property for past eight years, nine years. Uh, the property was bought back in 92 by members. I mean, most of us were still in high school when that was bought. Their plan with it, maybe at the time, was good. Especially with COVID, people have realized that they can work from home. So we have lost tenant after tenant after tenant. There's multiple spaces out there that are empty. You got four tenants in that building right now. Nobody is renting spaces. But also on the economic end with the city, there is a mortgage on that property that we have. But it is also a joint mortgage with our social hall. So when we lose that building because we can't afford the mortgage, we also lose our social hall. And the bank is not gonna keep tenants in there, so there's four tenants downstairs of our social hall that are gonna be kicked out. And there's four tenants up at Grand Plaza that will be kicked out. So you're losing eight businesses that probably will move out of the city. If those, if they will, when they foreclose, the loan is on both buildings, so it will, they will take both. They will take our social hall, Grand Plaza. Grand Plaza, and we will have no means of fundraising. And as Bubba said, that will shut us down. So hopefully this goes through and everybody takes it into consideration. But economically, we cannot get tenants in there. Nobody wants to rent it, it's office space anymore. We've actually discussed about two years ago, the same idea of turning it into indoor storage. We didn't feel that we should put another $300,000, $400,000 into the building, and then we leave, and 20 years down the road, there's a whole new group trying to figure out what to do with the building, and the debt that we left them like we've got left. So that's why this is the best option. It gets us out of debt and gets the building taken care of. We're not gonna be able to keep the upkeep on it. They're gonna be able to fix up the parking lot and make the back building look nice.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, sir, I'm gonna give you a couple minutes to finish what you have to say.
I just wanna make something clear. I'm not against a sale. What I'm against is, just like we had this Indian fella that bought the old city hall down on East Gate. He said he was gonna bring 200 people, this and that. This was 12 years ago. It's sitting there as a white elephant, okay? He gave us a real good explanation. I was gonna make progress for the city and all this. So that's all I'm afraid of, is if they don't provide us with specific information, a plan, you know, what they're gonna be doing two years, three years, five years from now, then I'm uncomfortable with it. Of course, it's gonna save this other group here with their problem. But as far as I'm concerned, if we don't have specifics, then I don't know how this board could honor anybody just based on a rescue plan. If that's a rescue plan, then I guess you're gonna rescue them. That's how I see it. I just wanna see Menneson move forward with economic impact. That's all I wanna see.
Understood.
Okay? So that's it.
Is there anything further you'd like to add?
No, but we would like, if possible, we understand, under the municipality's planning code, the zoning hearing board has 45 days to reach a decision. But we're running out of time here. So if you can make a decision within your earliest possible framework in writing, we would appreciate it so we can move forward to close it, if we're gonna be able to do it. If not, and you deny the relief request, we need to know that soon as well.
Sure. Well, did the board wanna go into a brief executive session this evening to discuss this? Okay, well, since there's so many people here, I'm not gonna ask you all to walk outside. We're gonna step back and, I think we're-
Now, when you just come here-
Mr. Solicitor, my client's son is on a baseball team today, and they're having a game in Elizabeth. I don't think there's any more testimony elicited from him. May he be-
Certainly, certainly.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm watching.
Mayor, thank you. I think we're just fine.
Rehome the winner.
Here's our door.
Kim Marvin in there, replace third.
Shut the door.
Here.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go back on the record. It's now 6:44 PM. The zoning board and I had a brief executive session for a legal question. I believe the board is ready to act tonight on the application for the use variance. Do I have a motion to approve the use variance?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes.
We have a roll call vote, please. Both in favor?
Lieutenant Lacy, yes.
I'll say yes.
The variance has been granted.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
You want me to prepare the variance? Are you ready to prepare? We need something in writing.
Sure.
I'll prepare something.
Sure. Mayor, you're the me. You're the legal, you're the big dog. I'm just amazed you did such a nice job. A lot of amazed you did, but I'm always amazed by the work you do. What is this?
Tim, Matt.
Well, he just, this guy just comes to every meeting and-